So you're here with the applicant, right?
Yes.
Okay, what you're gonna do is whoever's gonna speak, when your case is called, you can go even that way. Go that way. Watch where you walk, because the floor is uneven, okay? Because it's like look down, so you don't trip. Then yeah, in the tall stairs. So what's gonna happen is your lawyer's gonna sit right there. Can you see? Right there. But I don't think there is. But I don't know. Oh, see where there's a door right there? There's no doors here. And there's one all the way over there. And then you can go right back here. You'll see me obviously saying here. Okay, again, for all the new people that came in, if you can fill out the appearance forms, we'll be starting shortly. We need your name, address, and zip code. Additionally, if you're here for the applicant, sign up on top. If you're here in opposition to the applicant, then you sign on the bottom lines, where it states opposition. And then all you have to do is put the appearance forms back. You can grab an agenda. And then when you see your case getting near to being called, start to move up toward the front, and we'll alert you as well. These cases will be going fast. Because we want to make sure all the cases are heard. Can you find your form? Okay.
All right, I move that we reconvene this meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, and we're back. Before I call the first two o'clock case, I'll take any continuances or withdrawals.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman Rolando Acosta here on behalf of the applicant for Matt on page nine. Matters forty-four twenty-three S through forty-seven twenty-three S. So there's four matters seeking a continuance.
This is forty-four twenty-three S, forty-five twenty-three Z, forty-six twenty-three S, and forty-seven twenty-three S?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. You're seeking a continuance?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just make sure I got the date here. Okay, yeah, this will be, uh, these matters will be continued to August eighteen twenty-twenty-three, and no further notice will be given.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, do you have a continuance?
Good afternoon, Chairman. My name is Ashley Ficori. I'm an attorney at the law offices of Samuel VP Banks, and I'm appearing on behalf of Nicholas Fatigas. Um, we're asking for a continuance for thirteen twenty-three S and fourteen twenty-three Z. It's on top P, on the top of page nine of the agenda.
Okay, uh, yes, calendar numbers thirteen dash twenty-three dash S and fourteen dash twenty-three dash Z will be continued to August eighteen twenty-twenty-three, and no further notice will be given.
Thank you so much.
Page seven, uh, one ninety-five, uh, twenty-three dash S. Uh, Alderman William Hall, six Ward. And, uh, wanted to put this on hold.
Want to put it on hold?
Yes, sir.
Uh, in- until when?
The next, uh, appeals.
The next meeting?
The next meeting, yes, sir.
August? Okay, yeah, we can, we can do, uh, August. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Uh, we have the attorney for the applicant here.
Thank you. Just for the record, we have met with the community, um, with one of the, uh, community boards, organizations. All the notices were sent out twice. The applicant is here with his, uh, with his land use expert. So I just want that for the record, is it at all possible to get to July then?
July is not possible. Yeah.
Okay.
And this is, let me just make sure I got this right. We're talking about one ninety-five dash twenty-three dash S?
Right, yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, um, yeah, so one ninety-five dash twenty-three dash S will be continued to August eighteen twenty-twenty-three, and no further notice will be given.
And then just one quick announcement for all the attorneys in here. Just to remind everybody that we no longer have access to the room in the back. So if you have to use the restroom, make a phone call, you're gonna have to go out into the hallway. And I don't know if somebody left food in the back, but if they did, if they can kind of grab it, because they're not allowing us to use the back room anymore.
Okay, any other continuances or withdrawals before we call the first case for two o'clock? All right. We will call the first case for two o'clock. Calling, uh, one ninety-two dash twenty-three dash S. This is twenty-six fifty-one West North Avenue.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. And I saw you looked at me like, didn't I just see this guy? Because I was the last case on the morning call, and I'm the first case on the afternoon call. So you're not, uh...
Let me go ahead and, uh, and read the recommendation. This is the recommendation for calendar number one ninety-two dash twenty-three dash S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed body art service tattoo and body piercing.
Uh, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Lawrence Slusk. I have offices at, uh, ten thirty West Chicago Avenue, and I am the attorney. Go ahead.
Uh, let me, let me swear your witnesses in. Could everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I am the attorney representing the applicant here, Mr. Jeremy Valandingham in these, this application for special use to permit the establishment of a body art studio, specifically a tattoo and body piercing business located in a B three-two community shopping district. Joining me here today is the applicant Jeremy Valandingham and Lori Sabath, who is the certified real estate appraiser and our expert witness here today. Uh, with your permission, I'll begin with just a few questions for Mr. Valandingham.
Proceed.
Uh, Mr. Valandingham, uh, first of all, please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Uh, Jeremy Valandigum, uh, V is in Victor, A L L, A N D, I G, H A M.
And, uh, how long have you been in the body art services business?
About twenty-eight years.
Um, and you desire to open a business at twenty-six fifty-one West North Avenue, is that correct?
Yes.
That's because you had a business close by twenty-one, twenty-five twenty-three West North Avenue, just one block away, and your lease expired, and you found this new space that you thought would better serve your purposes, correct? All right. And when you move into this business, do you plan on investing, uh, in the business as far as remodeling or anything?
No.
So there'd just be interior, you're not gonna do any?
No, just everything is already...
Counselor, you could have him swear to his affidavit. That's all you want me to do?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So we've prepared an affidavit today, and we've submitted it to the board already. Um, if you continue to testify here today, would your testimony be consistent with the affidavit you filed already? Okay. And so then we'll just call by appraiser.
Sure.
Uh, Ms. Sabath, can you go ahead and state your name and spell your last name for the record?
Lori Sabbath, S A B A T H.
And Mr. Sabbath, this is your first time testifying in front of the zoning board of appeals, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
But you've testified in front of many other boards in the state of Illinois, and your, your CV is attached to your report, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, and, um,
the board recognizes your expertise.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just some real quick questions. You've, you've looked at the, uh, so first of all, how did you prepare yourself for preparing that report and your testimony here today?
I made a personal inspection of the property, the street, the surrounding neighborhood, the city of Chicago aerial zoning maps, as well as the planned developments across the street, and then read the application for those. Uh, for consistency, business hours were reviewed for the adjacent businesses, and the pedestrian walkways were observed.
And you made yourself familiar with the criteria for approval of special use of this matter?
Yes, sir.
And if we, if you continue to testify, your testimony would, would be consistent with what you submitted to the board in your report?
Yes, sir.
And you found that all the criteria were met for the board to approve this matter, and you've further explained your conclusions in your report?
I do, yes.
Mr. Chairman, do you want me to continue, or?
No, I think you're good. Question for the applicant. Uh, I saw on the findings of fact, the hours were listed as twelve PM to twelve AM, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Is that gonna be every day?
Yes.
And is that, uh, appointment only, or are you taking walk-ins?
It's gonna be walk-ins and appointments.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
I could just correct that. I think that you're not gonna be open on Sunday, correct? I think you, I think our applicant said Monday through Saturday.
Oh, I, I usually, I've always been open two days a week.
All right, yeah, I, I don't believe that there was a restriction on the days in my findings of fact.
Very good.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, we will take this matter under advisement, thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, have a good day.
All right, while you're getting situated, I'll read the department's recommendation. This is the recommendation for calendar number one ninety-three dash twenty-three dash S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed body art slash body piercing service, parentheses, ear piercing only. Um, with those planning to testify, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor, uh, proceed. Uh, you can give, you know, within a minute or less, tell us why you're here, and then have your witnesses swear to their affidavits.
Very good, thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, members of the board. Uh, for the record, Matthew Alley with the law firm of Ickerman LLP. I'm appearing today on behalf of Rowan Inc., the applicant for this special use at two thousand and seven North Sheffield. Present with me today is Rachel Cohen, the applicant's representative, and Michael Wallen, the project's appraiser. We also have Samantha Elvardo, the applicant's director of nursing education for any rebuttal questions. As a brief overview, Rowan has opened a jewelry and accessory retail store at the subject property, where they currently offer ear piercing with a handheld pressure device. Rowan also likes to offer their customers the option to have their ears pierced with a needle, uh, which can allow for a wider array of jewelry options, but requires the special use we are here for today. Uh, it's important to note, as indicated by the chairman, that Rowan will only offer ear piercing, no other piercing of any other body parts, nor any other body art services. We've discussed this project with Alderman Knudsen's office, as well as with the Sheffield Neighborhood Association, both of which have provided letters of no objection. At this time, uh, look to call our first witness, the applicant's representative, Rachel Cohen. Uh, Ms. Cohen, you are the director of new studio openings for Rowan Inc., correct?
Correct.
Um, and, uh, Rowan exclusively uses licensed nurses to facilitate the onsite ear piercing.
Correct.
And all of whom have been trained in the specific anatomy of the ear and safe and sanitary ear piercing practices. Uh, Ms. Cohen, you heard my opening statement. Do you agree with my summary of this matter?
Yes, I do.
Uh, did you also submit an affidavit to the ZBA?
Yes.
Are the statements made in that affidavit true and correct?
Yes.
And do you adopt as your testimony here today the statements contained within your affidavit?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Wallen, uh, could you briefly describe your qualifications for the board?
My name is Mike Wallen, W O L I N. My office address is at nineteen-ten First Street in Highland Park. I was awarded my MAI in nineteen eighty-five, eighty-four by my peers. In ninety-one, I was given my Illinois Certified State Appraisal license, general appraisal license. I've been doing commercial real estate for about forty-three years. Been identified as an expert in this board, this tribunal, as well as Cook County, as well as federal courts in Cook County.
Only forty-three years?
Only. Seems like a lot longer.
Mr. Wallen, did you prepare a report evaluating this special use application for compliance with the Chicago zoning ordinance?
I did.
Um, are the statements made in this report true and correct?
Each of them, to the best of my knowledge, are correct.
Uh, do you adopt as your testimony here today the statements contained within your report?
I do.
Did you also submit an affidavit to the board prior to today's hearing?
I did do that.
Uh, do you also adopt as your testimony the statements contained within your affidavit?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, that would conclude our case in chief. We'd welcome any questions from the board.
Thank you. And for the record, the board does recognize Mr. Wallen's expertise. Uh, any questions from the board? We have what we need, we'll take it under advisement.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
All right, while everyone is getting situated, I will read the department's recommendation for calendar number one ninety-four dash twenty-three dash S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the tavern expansion at the proposed outdoor patio, provided the special use is issued solely to the applicant Mystic Inc., and the development is consistent with the design and layout of the site plan dated June sixth, twenty-twenty-three, prepared by Three Sixty Design Studio. Okay. Okay. And I understand we have an objector, so we'll just give it a second. Okay, um, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand, including you, sir? Okay, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you. Counselor, proceed.
Good afternoon. For the record, my name is Tim Barton with the office of Thomas R. Raines Attorney at Law LLC. I'm here representing Mystic Inc., DBA Bar One O Six, the applicant in the matter of the special use, uh, for, uh, this, this property. Uh, briefly, the Mystic, uh, Mystic Inc. has held the City of Chicago Tavern license at one oh-six-four-nine South Pulaski for, um, about, uh, well, for twenty-nine years, since nineteen eighty-nine. Um, since twenty-eighteen, it's done business under the name of Bar One O Six. It is housed in a one-story building, which has a floor area of sixteen-hundred-and-eighty square feet. And the applicant is requesting the special use for an existing ground-level outdoor patio that was installed by the previous owner. Um, and the applicant now wants to bring it into compliance with the ordinance. Uh, the property is in a B three-one community, uh, shopping district, where the patio itself is permitted. Establishment of the patio, however, is considered, um, an expansion of the existing tavern, so therefore, it has to come before the board.
Uh, before you continue, have you had a conversation with the objector?
Yes.
Okay, and unable to resolve it?
No.
Okay. Proceed.
Go ahead. Um, I'll start with my first witness, uh, Joseph Lombardo. Uh, Joe, please state your name and address for the record.
Joe Lombardo, one oh-six-four-nine South Pulaski.
And you're the president and secretary of Mystic Inc., DBA?
Yes.
Bar One O Six. Uh, and you purchased the property in twenty-eighteen?
Yes.
When it was the Mystic Bar? Um, and it was, to your knowledge, it was, uh, an operation before that for twenty-nine years?
Yes.
Uh, when you bought the tavern, was the existing, uh, finished outdoor patio in place?
Yes.
Uh, on January nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three, did you receive a ticket for an unlicensed outdoor patio from the City of Chicago?
Yes.
BAC Business Affairs? Business Affairs and Consumer Protection. Um, so has this patio been used in that?
No.
Since that time? And your intention now is to bring it into compliance with the zoning ordinance?
Yes.
Uh, let's see, can you tell us the hours of operation for the, for the tavern?
The tavern itself was twelve AM to two AM. Saturdays and Sundays at eleven AM to two AM. The patio would be eleven, yeah, it'd be eleven AM, it would be until we close at ten, and then the weekends would be eleven.
Which is consistent with the licensing regulations.
Right.
Okay. I think I'll leave it at that. Joe, we submitted your affidavit and findings of fact uh, to the board on your behalf. So if I were to continue questioning you today, would you, uh, would your answers be consistent with that?
Yes.
Okay, I'll, um, was there any questions? I'll move on to our second witness.
Continue.
Okay. Uh, Toby Sorenson. Toby, are you a certified MAI appraiser, a member of the Appraisal Institute?
Yes, I am.
And the board recognizes his expertise.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, did you inspect this property, um, at my request?
I did.
And can you briefly describe the property and the immediate area?
I can, it's a thirty-three-hundred-twenty-square-foot, uh, interior lot, uh, rectangular. Um, it's located on the east side of Pulaski Road. Uh, it's improved with a, um, sixteen-hundred-and-eighty-square-foot, one-story storefront that's used as a tavern, um, with a proposed outdoor patio. The immediate area consists of, uh, commercial uses to the immediate north and south. Across Pulaski Road to the west are detached single-family residences. And there's a detached single-family residence, uh, to the immediate east.
Um, based on your examination of the site and area, do you have an opinion as to whether this site meets the criteria for the requested special use?
Yes, I do.
And does the special use proposed comply with the zoning ordinance?
As it does as proposed.
Would the special use proposed, uh, for the tavern expansion, specifically this outdoor patio, be in the interest of the public convenience?
Yes.
Would there be any negative impact caused by this?
No.
And is its design compatible with the surrounding neighborhood?
It is.
Uh, will the business operations be compatible with surrounding uses?
They will be.
And will the special use promote pedestrian comfort and safety?
It will.
And you prepared a written report of your observations and conclusions, did you not?
I did.
And if I, well, I submitted the report to the board, um, along with our findings of facts. If we were to continue with this questioning, would your answers be consistent with the, that affidavit?
Yes, they would.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chairman, that's our presentation. Um, I believe there is one, well, one other witness in, um, in favor.
Are you, you're here in support?
I am.
Okay, could you state your name and address, please?
My name is Tristan Carnes Angus. I am, uh, here on behalf of Alderman Matt O'Shea with the nineteenth ward.
Thank you very much, uh, and, uh, go ahead and, uh, tell us why you're here.
So we are here in support of the special use permit to establish an outdoor, um, to extend, excuse me, the footprint of the current existing license for the outdoor patio. I do have in my hand, um, five copies of, uh, three different letters, but it is encompassing seven three letters each. One letter is signed by five residents, five different addresses, excuse me, in the immediate area. One is signed by one resident, and then the final one is signed by an adjacent business, all in support of the, uh, proposed improvements.
Um, so obviously, the Alderman's office is in support, and then the immediate neighbors are definitely in support, is that what you're?
The certainly seven of them, yes. I can't speak for all of them, but, uh, we do generally take home calls when there's...
Right, right, so I, I mean, yes, I, I know that, uh, the Alderman goes deep over there. I, I, so you do, so I'm just, you know, before I, uh, weigh in on this, I always like to know where the Alderman is and the neighborhood group is. So this is not official neighborhood group, these are just...
Those are immediate neighbors only.
Immediate.
However, had I been able to bring, uh, the Mount Greenwood Community and Business Association is the business association in the neighborhood. Um, right now, we have a newly appointed executive director, because the previous executive director actually, um, was appointed to the state legislature. Had I been able to bring either of them with me, I would have, and it would have been...
So you're on record saying they're supportive of this, the Mount Greenwood?
I am on record as stating that the Mount Greenwood Community and Business Association is also in full support of this application.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Uh, well, just maybe procedure. Do we have a, uh, an aerial view of the, in this application?
Yes. Yes, so one oh-six-four-seven, although the, the red dot is kind of in the parking lot to the adjacent businesses. It is one oh-six-four-seven, it's kind of the, the darker shaded unit. And then directly to the east, right there, so then if you were to go a little bit to the right, that's the, um, patio. There you go, yep. No problem. So the patio is actually bound on the south side by the adjacent businesses, and on the north side by the adjacent businesses parking lot. So the exposure to the neighborhood is specifically the eastern elevation, um, because there is no alley, so that it's affecting the, the house at thirty-nine forty-four specifically. But obviously, other neighbors as well, that's, you know. Thank you, you're welcome.
Okay, yes, uh, let's go to the, uh, objector, sir. Could you state your name and address for the record?
First name is, uh, Thomas, last name's Lougghney, L O U G H N E Y.
Thank you, Mr. Lougghney.
One oh-six-two-six, South Harding Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
I've lived in my house forty-seven years.
Okay.
I've been there once since Pulaski was a two-lane road. We had, um, the egg and I, and on that same premise, and never had a problem. It was all in the building. The backend was never used. It was bought by other people, and then eventually, Tim Duggan bought it and made it a patio out there illegally. He fought him, lost. Then the Mystic bought it from him and continued the backend use. And then one oh-six tavern took over, and they upgraded everything. Everything was great. But they're using the building, the backend, as a bear garden. We get the noise at night. There's four big TVs... There's four big TVs mounted on the. Um, strip mall to the south. And it acts like a sounding board. Going right through the parking lot to the north of it. So you can't sleep at night with your windows open. And. We voted beer gardens down for the previous owners. But it was used anyway. So when I complained about them using it as a beer garden, I was told it was a patio. And that the alderman can approve that, it's, oh, okay. And then I got this letter from Mr. Rains and Mr. Barton, saying that they were. Going to apply for a patio status. Well, with a patio status, they don't need a beer garden license. There's nine licenses in the city of Chicago for the distribution of liquor. If they get a patio status, they continue to use their present license, which is a premise license. For the patio. I don't know what else I can say.
Okay. That.
Maybe this will be the straw.
The, uh, the TVs that you referenced, are those in the patio?
They're mounted on the wall of the strip mall going. To the south of them, it's up in the air.
Okay, so not the applicant's property?
Pardon me?
Not, not Mystic's property?
Uh, they probably rented, I don't know.
Maybe for the applicant, are those the TVs that he's talking about, do you understand?
They're mounted to the property owned by, um, the pantry, open pantry, right?
Oh, okay.
But.
It's done well.
Are they used by your business or the neighboring business?
My business.
And for what purpose?
For, for TV, for TV, for games and stuff like that.
But they're not on your business's property?
It's a, it's literally on top of it, and it's mounted to the, to the break.
And do these TVs, do they, um, are they for the patio?
Yes.
Okay, and.
There's no sound.
That was gonna be my next question. So the, so you don't operate the sound of the TVs?
No.
For the patio, okay. And there's no amplified sound? On the patio?
There's no speakers out there, there's no, the jukebox is only for the inside.
Let, let me, let me jump in on that, cuz I know this, so just to educate my fellow commissioners, um, you cannot have speakers outside. You know, I mean, if you have speakers, you gotta have them, like, inside, they be under, uh, very, yes, as you would know from the Alderman's office. So I just want, you cannot have speakers on something.
That's, that's, don't do it. That's what we're getting at.
Sure, sure, but, but the gentleman just answered, the TVs are not on, and I just wanted to make sure that you all know that Shannon Trotter would come down on him hard if they have, uh. As you all know that too.
So.
She's all over this.
Okay, so the, the objector, you said you can't sleep at night, is it because of what exactly? You can't sleep with the windows open, can you describe?
Noise from the patio.
But not from speakers or the televisions?
Uh, probably loud drunks.
Okay.
People applauding whatever they're watching, it's a, it's a sport bar, it's an excellent smork bar, I'm not. Trying to take that away from them, I just don't want it outside the building.
Any other questions from, uh, the commissioners? Okay, thank you, we will take this matter under advisement.
Wait, rebut?
Yeah, you can rebut.
Go ahead.
Oh. Toby, let me ask you a couple of questions, couple of follow-up questions?
Please.
Um. Have, in your experience, uh, as a certified appraiser. Have you come across similar outdoor patios in, uh, proximity to residential neighborhoods?
Yes, I have.
And based on what you've seen, uh, how have owners of the commercial properties of the patios addressed, um, residential concerns?
The, um, uh, sports bars that are most harmonious with the surrounding neighborhood when there's, uh, detached residences like this. Um, uh, the, the ones that are most harmonious have barriers around them, uh, such as the one that's, ones that are present here, we have a, a six-foot fence surrounding. The proposed patio on two of the elevations. Uh, the remaining two elevations are actually bonded by buildings, the, the subject building itself and the strip center to the south. Um, in addition, uh, the ways that they mitigate, um, any potential impact on the neighborhood i- is the hours in which they operate, and, and this is, uh, proposed. The proposed operation hours for this facility are fairly common for this type of use.
Okay. Uh, one other thing, um, I'm looking at the, at the exhibit, or rather at the screen. Um. Do you, you were in the neighborhood, you were in the immediate vicinity?
I was.
Um, do you see the property that's one oh six two six? South Harding, or can you tell?
On, on the exhibit that's on the screen right now, um, one oh six two six would be one building further north, uh, it's actually beyond the exhibits, uh, limit there, so. Uh, it'd be north of one oh six three zero and off of the screen. It's also beyond several fences, um, uh, a fence surrounding the subject and a fence surrounding the, the parking lot. And potentially, I'm, I'm not certain if the homes on, on the cul-de-sac at Hart, at Harding Avenue there have, um, perimeter fences, but it could be beyond several other perimeter fences as well.
I, I got a question for the Alderman's office, um. How many outdoor patios do you have in Mount Greenwood, is there other ones in the neighborhood? Ballpark.
We have, I would say there's probably. There's at least four that I can think of off the top of my head. One that's not far from here, recently closed, it was a firewater. Um. And the, uh, well, and, and there's a difference between the, we have several expanded outdoor dining permits. Um, that are now back in force. Uh, so I would say at least four or five, um, in the ward as a whole, gosh, we probably have closer to ten.
And do you have any issues with any of them?
Um. Not consistently.
Thank you.
No.
Um, I have one more thing, uh, for Mr. Loung. Mr. Loung, um, do you have any questions for the applicant?
They've been operating since they opened as a beer garden, that's where all the noise is coming from. If they were applying now, it wouldn't be their previous existing, you know what I'm saying? It's been illegal all this time. Now you're gonna sanction it. And people who wrote these letters are mostly on the other side of Harding Avenue. I mean, a good distance away.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything further?
They're landlocked, you can drive by and you can't see their patio. Unless you're in one of the neighbor's yards, or you're in the parking lot of the strip mall to the north of them. So, and like I say, it's a sounding board right down the, the shot. It's up to you.
All right, thank you very much, everyone, we will take this matter under advisement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next case, one ninety-six twenty-three S, fourteen sixty-two West Seventy-Ninth Street.
Oh, there you go, yeah. Thank you. Your next witness?
Hey, what do you want?
Where do you want the community, I was just gonna have them stand up again or something.
Yeah.
If they stay in the, in the gallery, then we can just acknowledge them.
Yeah.
They, they actually want to stay there and want to be seen.
Okay, um, first, would, uh, everyone here planning to testify, including the objectors, uh, raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you, I'm gonna go ahead and read the department's recommendation. This is the recommendation for calendar number one ninety-six dash twenty-three dash S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a transitional residence independent housing program. For up to twelve adult males in an existing four-story building with ground floor commercial use and three, four-bedroom dwelling units above. Provided, one, the special use is issued solely to the applicant. GRO Community NFP, two, the development is consistent with the design and layout of the title sheet dated September thirteen, two thousand and twenty-one. Site plan dated June seven, two thousand and twenty-three. Existing floor plans and existing elevations dated June five, two thousand and twenty-three, prepared by Gary L. Matthews, Licensed Architect. Three, the facility is utilized as transitional housing exclusively for previously incarcerated, incarcerated adult males. Who have already completed a reintegration housing program, and four, there are no more than twelve adult male residents at any time. Counselor Moore, please proceed.
Thank you very much, my name for the record is Thomas S. Moore, will you tell the board who you are?
My name is Aaron Mallory, a founder of Grow Community.
And Mr. Mallory, um, you, uh, got a degree in electrical engineering from, uh, University of Southern Illinois, is that right?
Yes, that's how you.
And I've read that that's the, uh, the, one of the best, uh, majors, uh, for someone coming out of college to make a good income, so you became an electrical engineer, is that right?
So I got my degree in, yes.
And, and then, so you took a job in it, is that right?
Uh, so when I graduated, I started doing mentoring work, I started working with young people in the community, I, I recognized that my passion. Uh, was more geared to helping my community as compared to going into the field of engineering.
So you did not take a job in, in the career, you started being a mentor?
Yes.
And what did you learn as a mentor?
Uh, just disparities within our communities, uh, economic challenges that present some of the challenges that we see, uh, from our young people, um, involved in the criminal justice system, but as well as our adults that are, particularly our men. Uh, that get involved in the criminal justice system.
So you started focusing on young, uh. Male African-Americans, is that right?
Young black males and adult black males, yes.
A- and, uh, what did, so what did you do to further your ability to help them?
Uh, I got my masters in social work, uh, went to the University of Chicago, um, and then I started working in community mental health centers, just really honing in on my skills to be a better clinician.
Okay, and, and so what did you learn at the U of C that helped you, uh, be able to eventually start this program?
Yeah, I learned a lot about different clinical models, I learned, uh, particularly around the research and data about particularly men that are incarcerated, the lack of resources and opportunities when they come back into their community. I learned about Medicaid, uh, the process of using Medicaid to support communities, particularly the communities that are underserved, um, and just really learned the skills that I was able to do now and building up the organization.
And, and so what was the next job you took to try to, uh, further your, the, the mission that you now saw ahead of you?
Yeah, I worked at HRDI as a, a community mental health center located on the south side, uh, and there, uh, I worked with a caseload full of boys. Uh, particularly boys that had challenges going on in the household, challenges in school, and really just cultivated relationships with them, but just saw that there was a continued need for these services and support.
And who were your colleagues at that place, who did, who did you, and, and was there a lack of a certain kind of colleague?
Well, I was the only black male clinician, and one of these that I recognize that in this space, there's a lack of black male clinicians to provide the support, when we think about mental health, um, the. I'm sorry, yeah, therapeutic alliance is so important, in particular, mental health, when you have somebody that looks like you, who can relate to you, it helps with the treatment process, and unfortunately. Um, what I saw working at HRDI, but particularly a lot of other community mental health centers, that there's a lack of particularly black males to help, uh, fill the void in counseling services.
And, and is that what then inspired you to leave HDI and form your own not-for-profit called Grow Community NFP?
It is, yes, uh, just seeing the shortage, uh, of, again, black males in this space was the appetites for me going out and stepping out on faith and creating Grow Community.
And what is, what is your mission, what is the mission of Grow Community?
Yes, it's molding boys and healing broken men.
And, and so what do you try to do for them?
Uh, the, the clinical support, the counseling services, the wraparound services, uh, and now recognizing that there's a housing shortage, providing housing support.
So when you were doing the, the, uh, clinical support, and that's counseling, is that right?
Yes, counseling.
So you address violence and, uh, what other kind of issues?
Yeah, so we, we look at the core of trauma, and we see as trauma is the antecedent or the cause for a lot of behaviors we see within our communities. And so we really get down to the crux and working with our, our boys and our men to recognize things that may be going on in a household, but also things that are going on in a community that then create those behaviors. Uh, and so providing somebody who they can relate to, they can connect to, um, and then again, wrapping them with the services, our goal is to come back gun violence within the city of Chicago, and so really taking a holistic approach and doing it.
And, and, um, how many clinical people, uh, counselors do you now have working with the patient, uh, um. Group that you had identified?
By the grace of God, we have forty clinicians, counselors that we're working for Grow Community right now, and addressing this need.
Okay, and, and why, why did you, uh, do it on the south side?
It's a need, you know, um, they just kind of, when I came back from college, I saw that there was a huge need, particularly around, uh, mental health services and support, uh, there aren't a lot of. Community mental health centers on the south side, particularly with the mission that we have, and particularly servicing boys and men, uh, particularly black boys and men, and I, I would say lastly too, just because of, you know, just the, the. The violence and the challenges that we see on the south side, really just for, for me, within the organization, trying to come up with a solution to the challenges and problem.
And there, there are other groups, uh, working on the west sides and, and, but there were none, uh, or. Insufficient on the south side, is that right?
So when we think about the reentry population specifically, um, there's a lack of providers who provide housing, uh, and support to men that are coming home from prison, uh, the west side has numerous, um, housing programs and support. But unfortunately, uh, communities like Rose and Auburn Gresham, um, where there's a high concentration of men that have come home, um, from prison, don't have that type of support that's needed.
So calling your attention to our number one exhibit here, can you tell the board what that is and what it shows?
Yeah, so, uh, a study from the Urban Institute conducted that, um, a study sample of men coming home from prison, they lived at six, I'm sorry, seven particular communities. Um, and communities on the south side, these are top seven communities where men that are coming home from prison come back to. Um, Rose and the Auburn Gresham was one of those top seven communities, as well as you have Austin, North Lyondale, and East Garfield Park, which are the west side. Um, and so, uh, one of the things that we recognize is that, uh, men that are coming home from prison are residing or coming back to these communities, um, and oftentimes don't have that support. Uh, men that come home from prison oftentimes are thirteen, thirteen times more likely to be homeless, uh, more often than not. Likely to be unemployed, and it creates a visceral cycle, or it's a perpetual cycle, men are going in and out of the system because of the lack of resources and support, to support them within these communities.
Just to be fair, I have some extra exhibits, may I hand some to the oppo- opposition?
Yes.
So on this, the three exhibits in number one here, um, what are the two areas that, that have the most, uh, people coming back from prison to try to reintegrate into the community?
Yeah, so for the south side, it's, uh, West Inglewood, Rose, and Auburn Gresham.
Okay.
Those three communities.
And where is, where is your primary facility?
So our primary location is two fifty-nineth, one hundred and fifteen street, which is in the Rosen community.
And the application here for this, uh, facility, where would that be?
That will be in the Auburn Gresham community.
Okay, i- if we look at the second page, uh, there are fifteen percent of all people coming back from prison are in, uh, these two areas, is that right?
Yeah, so the data there, uh, depicts particularly for Grow Community, um, our clients that we serve, so we served over a hundred four reentry, uh, clients. Um, and out of a hundred four, fifteen percent have come from the six oh six two zero zip code, which represents Auburn Gresham, now again, that's, um. Individuals coming from all different communities on, uh, on, on the south side of Chicago, but as you can see on the data. But as you can see on the data, with that 15% is a high concentration of individuals that are, that we're servicing or have served from the Auburn Gresham Community.
Incidentally, I forgot, you, you have your masters from the University of Chicago, but you're now a PhD candidate, is that right?
So I'll be starting in August, getting my PhD from the University of Cincinnati, and I'll be studying criminal justice, uh, with the goal to learn more about best evidence, best practices, to combat, um, the recidivism rates of men as they come in and out of our communities, as well as gun violence. Um, and really being able to publish literature around best practices to support, uh, the needs of our community.
And, and just to finish, the third page of that shows there are 13, um, ZIP codes that equal the one ZIP code that you are, um, serving, is that right?
Correct. So, uh, on the, where it says the South Suburbs, um, those are different communities fragmented 1%, 1%, so we just coupled it to represent the 15%. Um, but the 60620 ZIP Code, uh, reflects a high proportion of the clients that we serve that are on parole, um, or classified as reentry.
Okay, and what's the problem, what's the housing problem when they come back and try to reintegrate into the neighborhood?
Yeah, there's a, there's a form of discrimination oftentimes where there's lack of individuals who will give them opportunity to rent from. Uh, oftentimes too, if you don't have pay stubs, or if you don't have that work experience, then you can show, prove that you have the income to be able to support as well. And so oftentimes, like I said earlier, it's a 13 times more likely to be homeless. And so as a result, it's just a cycle, again, of individuals who, uh, don't have the means, and so unfortunately fall back to the same things on the streets, which then creates a recidivism rate that we see. Sorry.
And, and so what, what would, the program that we're here today is not a, uh, first step out of prison. It's a, a, after you graduate from a traditional program, is that right?
That's correct.
And why is that?
Uh, so we want to build steps and benchmarks, and you have to earn it, right? So you go through our initial program, which is our reintegration housing, um, and also you go through our, our clinical workforce development program, uh, where they spend half of the time getting a intensive cognitive behavioral therapy. Um, there's a lot of good research around cognitive behavioral therapy that shows reduction, um, in behavior by learning these different skills, i.e. thinking skills, and to really navigate within your community. Um, the other half of it, they, they work within our screen printing facility, and they obtain, uh, skills working in a, in a group setting, manufacturing setting. And our goal is to teach those work skills, but also teaching skills to help mitigate so they don't fall back into the streets as well.
And in terms of that discrimination, this program would give them both a, uh, they'd pay monthly rent, is that right?
They would pay monthly rent, yes.
And so they'd create a rent history, is that right?
That's correct, yes.
And they, they'd also create a, a rental reference, is that right?
That's correct, yes.
And however, though, uh, what are you gonna, you're gonna put that rent in your pocket?
No, we're gonna use it as a down payment for them to be able to have a, a security deposit and first month's rent, so that we can help them transition into, uh, market rate housing and be able to set them up for success.
So you're gonna save that money for them and then give it to them in a lump sum, or pay it actually to a potential landlord, uh, so that they, to, to, uh, get rid of the problem that that most of them have in getting a place they can rent?
Exactly, so we'll have it in escrow saved. And again, now that they have work, they have pay stubs, they've been able to learn how to pay rent, used to that, now we're the landlord of record, and so again, to set them up for success.
And, and, um, can just anybody, uh, get into this program? What qualifications do you have to have before you let them into this program?
Yeah, you have to complete our clinical workforce development program, and so that's the intensive cognitive behavioral therapy infused with the screen print workspace that we have. Um, and so you have to hit certain benchmarks, sorry, you have to hit certain benchmarks in regards to, um, the dosages of cognitive behavioral therapy, as well as fulfilling the requirements of the workspace. And so it's a high level you have to meet, as well as being on time, coming to work daily on time. So those factors contribute, uh, to that component of the program.
And so will everyone who is in this program, basically, this is, uh, three apartments on the top, uh, with four people in each one. Uh, they'd each have their own room, but they'd share, uh, the living room, dining room, et cetera, is that right?
That's correct.
And you hope, you, right now, you're on 115th Street, but 115th in Michigan, but you hope to open a satellite office on the ground floor of the commercial unit here, is that right?
That's correct, yes.
And there you would have support services, counseling, if the people upstairs felt that they needed to come back home and, and have additional help, is that right?
That's correct.
And also, uh, someone would be there to kind of monitor things and make thing, make sure things are going as they should, is that right?
That's correct.
And you don't call it a lease, you call it a program agreement, but everyone would agree to, uh, certain, uh, rules and regulations, is that right?
That's correct.
So you wouldn't allow, uh, congregating out in front, would you?
No.
You wouldn't allow someone to bring drugs there, would you?
No.
You wouldn't allow someone to have, uh, parties there, would you?
No.
And, um, within this group, um, as there, it, as you've selected this group of people who you think can make it, right?
Yes.
And, um, within this group, uh, is there a, a peer dynamic to succeed?
There is definitely a peer dynamic to succeed, and I say that because if you're around individuals who are motivated and that's pushing you, oftentimes that's contrary to what they are, our guys are able to get within the community where there's a lot more negative peers. And so again, there's a lot of pretty cool research around, when you're around people who are positive, people who are around you that are pushing you, it's gonna encourage you to stay on the right path. And so our goal is to create that type of environment, so our guys are around like-minded people who have completed the program, that have goals, so that we can set them up for success.
And what's, what's your tolerance if someone breaks the rules?
Oh, we have a, a zero tolerance. Um, so if you don't fulfill with the rules and obligations, um, then you won't be able to reside there. We will find assistance somewhere else, but, uh, we have to, um, be very intentional about our rules and our expectations.
Now, uh, we had a community meeting and, um, uh, people voiced their opposition. One of their things was they, they didn't want you bringing these people into their neighborhood. Would you address that, please?
Well, I think what the data shows is that these individuals are currently living in a community right now. Um, and so we're just trying to be a catalyst to support these individuals who reside in a community. Um, the publication that we identified data from the Urban Institute, but as well as our data that we've gathered in regards to clients we serve, shows that there's a need within the 60620 ZIP Code, i.e. the Auburn Gresham Community.
I think that's all I ask of this witness now. Um, we asked the next person, would you tell us who you are?
I'm Nicole South Washington, Director of Clinical Housing.
And what does the Director of Clinical, uh, help do?
I'm Director of Clinical Housing, just oversees any housing that is located at Grow Community. So I will be overseeing the reentry housing that we are trying to.
Okay, and, uh, your education and background, uh, was from New York, is that right?
It is.
And you came here, uh, uh, originally, uh, with your husband's job, is that right?
So my husband is currently going to University of Chicago to get his PhD. So I came from New York to support him, and, uh, we live here in Chicago.
And you weren't all that happy about being in Chicago, and how do you feel about it now?
Well, no, so I think I was here for about three years, and I was ready to go, asking, when are we gonna leave? Like, this is horrible, I can't stand it here, it's like, I couldn't. However, I, um, started working for Grow, and I was a behavioral health consultant there. And though I really did like what I did, it still wasn't enough to keep me here. And I acquired the position as a Director of Clinical Housing, and I see what happens at Grow. I see the participants that come into Grow. I see, um, everybody is respectful, the rapport is built with the clients. Um, it's just, the individuals that come into Grow, they want to be there, they get the help that they need, and they show respect off of what they did. Like, what happens in Grow is powerful, and I'm just happy to be a part of it.
So, so, uh, if you're gonna be in Chicago, you're happy to be where, as long as you're working in Grow?
I only want to be in Chicago if I'm working.
And, uh, you, you have been, uh, doing a DCFS, um?
Yeah, so currently, the housing that we have is, uh, transitional living, and the population that are, there are DC wards of the state. So, um, they came from being incarcerated. The program that Grow has is a specialty program, so those are the youth that's been incarcerated, and they're in DCFS. They need a place to stay, and they're transitioning into independent living, ranging from 17 and a half to 21. What we have seen from the youth, um, from the transitional living placement to the participants in the program already, is that that rapport is built. So that makes a huge difference, that that rapport is there. The, the youth that was coming into the transitional placement, they were just coming in. Like, it didn't matter where they came from, they didn't know us, we didn't know them, but they were there. We provided them with the services that they needed. However, it's been seen that the ability for them to really respect the space is non-existent, because they don't know us. Um, I, I feel like DCFS youth has a sense of entitlement, and I feel like the therapists, when a participant comes into Grow and they're going to be going through the cognitive behavioral therapy, they're gonna be going through the workforce, they're gonna transition into the reentry housing. As they go through these transitions, they're supported, like, they're never going to be out by themselves, like.
You think the programs that Grow, uh, works with these young adults is significant enough that it turns people around and they're not going back?
Absolutely. I think that you hear, the people that come into the reentry, by the time they get to that point, this is where they want to be. Right, so they're not the individuals that want to come and play, they're the people that want to change. Like, their past was the past, and that's what we want to acknowledge it, and they want to leave it there.
On that note, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
On that note, I, I'd ask, uh, Jerry, is Jerry? Jerry, will you tell us, tell the board who you are?
My name is Jerry Davis Hill. I'm the Executive Director of Grow Community.
And, um, you, uh, are, I think you told me when, uh, I was talking to you, that you are them. Can you tell the board what you mean?
Yeah, uh, so, uh, just make, I'm trying to not go fast, okay? Because I get passionate about this. So, uh, I, I came out of prison in 2010, uh, June 25th. Uh, made it 22nd on my birthday, 2010, my daughter was murdered. And I vowed her life wouldn't be in vain. So I came out of prison, and, uh, some people supported me, and I got some counseling. And in 2011, I went back to college and got my bachelor's social work degree in 2016. I got my master's social work degree in 2018, and I met Aaron Mallory in 2015, and he had this vision. And I faced housing discrimination, so I know what it looks like. Uh, I went to Innuvois, uh, transitional housing, so I know what that looked like. But in my healing space for my daughter, I had to keep going forward, so I know what stigmas look like.
Okay, and when you say you are them, the, the people, the, the population that, that Grow Community serves, uh, you can relate to them, is that right?
Oh, indeed, uh, so I'm Jerry first, so when they see me, they don't see Executive Director. You know, I, I, I'm relational with them, because like, I know what it feels like to be on the end. And what keeps me humble is what God brought me to now. I oversee, oh, I oversee Illinois. Those, because it's 42, there's 70-plus staff. So I just try to make sure we ensure that our staff, and the CEO is biggest on that, that self-care for our staff, that we take care of our staff, that our staff behold. Our CEO just took like 20 plus members to Orlando in April for self-care and activities. So that's back, that's investing back into your company.
Okay, and, and you, Grow didn't exist when you were coming through your transition, is that right?
Oh, no, I wish it did. I probably own it.
But based on your experience and what you've seen at Grow, um, this can be a very positive force in the community, is that fair?
Well, indeed, so, uh, CEO is kind of humble, so I'm, I'm gonna kind of put him on the spot here. I remember when he first started, and I think I came on a year later, it was just me and him, and the office manager. And he had this vision of African-American males working with African-American boys and males. So our youngest client is four, I oldest is 62. And I remember about two years later, probably about a year or two after pandemic, I look back, instead of me and him, we got, we had 30-plus African-American males, social worker psychologists doing this work. And now I look back and we got over 40, so I know God's in it, so it's like, I know what I'm invested in, and I know what he believes in.
And in terms of discrimination, when you get out of prison and housing, did you experience that?
Yeah, it hurt. I mean, it's like, we use the term returning citizen, so if I'm a returning citizen, I should have my rights back. And I was in school, I was working, I was, I got married at the time, I was married, my wife was working, but my background stopped me from getting that kind of department.
Uh, um, I think they'll tell us, but I think the objectors are, are afraid that, that people once in prison, uh, would, you know, might go back or be recidivist. Um, are you ever going back?
No, no, no.
And, and you, the people you've seen going through the, uh, who have gone through the clinical work with, with Grow, and who are selected for this kind of program, um, is it your experience that the majority of them have turned the corner and are going forward?
Oh, indeed, uh, you know, I'd be transparent in some of the clients that come to me, and we did a college tour at Governor's Day University, but, you know, I write my narrative now, so I'm not ashamed when I went through, I believe I went through what I went through to be here in the States, because I'm number two at the company, but I'm not ashamed to say, when I was caught in that cycle, there was no growth. So I've been to prison seven times. My number is B3579, so I didn't have that support, and I bought into the myth of the streets. But I didn't know I had some trauma going on, I didn't know I had some depression going on, I didn't know I had all these issues going on. So when I got, my daughter got murdered about her life when it been in pain, so I had to put the work in. And I met a guy, a young guy like Aaron Mallory, and I believed in his vision, so I know what I bring to the table. Because I'm a part of that, when I see I'm them, I'm a part of that struggle in that cycle, so under my watch, they will not be abused, we will hold them accountable. I do believe in healthy confrontation, but we give them love. I think love is the antidote. And what irks me is when, and, you know, in my space, where I'm at now, what irks me when I hear people say these people. You know, that, that kind of like irks me, because we're not giving them a chance. I wear a suit and tab, but you don't know I was these people. So it's like, why do we give them a chance? Why do we just support? You know, I mean, I'm evident that it works. It can work, but we have to give them the love and support and hold them accountable. I'm a taxpayer, so since they didn't give me a permit, I own my own home now, on Wood, I pay taxes, right? So I'm giving back to my community. So it's like, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a vanguard of what's going on and protect them in this space, and give them hope. They just want a shot of hope. When I came out of here to tell you a plan, I know what I want to do. I just need some support and hope. I didn't need people telling me what I couldn't do, that I was going back, that I was no good, I didn't need that. I just need people to encourage me to believe in my dream, and here I stand now.
Okay, um, thank you very much, sir. Uh, Mr. Jenkins, will you tell the board who you are?
I'm Jenkins Cooper, and I'm a participant in the workforce program at Grow.
Okay, and, and you're currently still in it, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And you, uh, learned a, uh, skill, uh, with, uh, what did you?
Screen printing.
Okay.
I'm the screen printing skill, and.
And so now you're, you're teaching others that skill, is that right?
Exactly.
But you've also now gotten a commercial outside job, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, and for a while you lived with your mom, but your mom didn't need you there anymore, is that fair?
Exactly.
Okay, and if you had a program like this, so housing is a problem for you, is that right?
Yes.
And if you had a program like this, uh, and if you met all of their rules and screening, uh, that would help you significantly, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And it's helped me so far since I've been home. I was just released from the penitentiary last year, I did like 10 and a half years. I was released from the penitentiary on June 7th, and when I came home, I was like, kind of like stuck, you know, like institutionalized. I was like afraid to go outside, I was like stuck in a house, you know? Until my parole officer referred me to Grow, you know? Once he referred me to Grow, and I became a part of the workforce program, everything changed for me, you know? And the cognitive behavioral therapy, it helped a lot too, you know?
Why did that, how did that help?
Well, like I said, I was stuck, you know, I was like institutionalized, you know, it was kind of hard for me to adapt to society, you know?
So what did the, the cognitive, uh, counseling, that, how did that help you change who you are?
That'll be changed the way I think, you know, I'll need, learn to think before I react, how to, you know, control my emotions, and, you know, a whole lot, you know? And like I said, and the screen printing program, I went from job trainer. So now I'm training guys, you know, I was getting paid for, you know, go to the training program. Now I'm training guys, getting paid to train guys, you know, and like you said, I also have another job.
And did you ever?
Grow, I work for Grow during the daytime, then after I leave Grow, I go to my second job doing the screen printing, you know, thanks to Grow.
And did you, did you ever have a real job before you, before you were in prison?
No, sir.
Okay, so the two jobs you have now are the first real jobs you've ever had?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Um, Levon, will you tell the board who you are?
My name is Levon McKnight. I am a graduate of Grow Community.
Okay, and, um, what, what in particular helped you with, uh, the Grow Community? Okay, and um what what in particular helped you with uh the Grow Community program?
Um I could say what particularly helped me was the atmosphere. It was the belief, like coming home, you don't have too many people that believe in you. And then it's like, you are what you're surrounded by. So like if you're surrounded by people that want to uplift theyself and uplift others, there's only one direction to go unless you choose not to.
And how did the cognitive, the counseling help you?
Um it just, just give you more options, like most people like not small-minded, but closed-minded. So it's like if you never opened a door before, like you want to know that it's something beyond it.
So did you start thinking of yourself and your own life in different ways than you ever had before?
Yes, I started thinking of myself and others more differently because it's it's easy to judge somebody, but it's, you know, it's harder, but it's better to understand them.
Um thank you, sir. Um Mr. Chairman, um well, and then we have Joe Ryan.
The board recognizes his expertise.
Okay, now Joe Ryan, uh you testify in a lot of different cases in front of this board. But when you started out, you really were kind of an expert in shelters and um uh program uh housing program uh facilities, is that right?
Yes, I have a unique experience in that. Um while I was studying at night for the appraisal classes, I was a pre-sentence investigator for the Cook County Probation Department. And uh in, from nineteen seventy-six to nineteen eighty. And at that time, Governor Thompson was elected and uh introduced class X sentencing and mandatory sentencing for felonies. And as the investigators, what we helped to do is uh interviewing recidivists. Asked them why, one of the questions was, why are we introduced, you know, why are you back here? And the two biggest answers were lack of housing, lack of mentoring. And uh that's why this program is so unique.
And um so at my request, you did a a study of uh this facility and uh what was, what did you learn and dis- and and find out?
Well, the the most important part, at at least in my opinion, was uh establishing a credit history. So that um uh people coming out of this program had a credit history, could say to a landlord, I have a reference, um you know, I have a credit history and uh I'm will be a good tenant. Um I think that's the most important thing that comes from this. Uh the mentoring obviously is important, but uh if you come out of a situation where now, okay, I've got a job, I'm on my own, if you don't have housing, you know, you've lost a big part of it.
Okay, and uh in your opinion, uh will this have a negative effect on the surrounding property values?
None whatsoever.
And and why is that? I I mean, it um I'm I'm sure uh some of the neighbors fear that their property values are going to go down because uh these people are living on Seventy-Ninth Street.
Well, I I've done shelters all over the south and west sides, on uh north sides, really all over the city. And and shelters that are well structured and um create a positive environment, don't have any of the problems uh that the neighbors fear. Uh the no congregating, the the uh zero tolerance for drugs and um and alcohol and partying are the are a big step in that direction. And so you don't have the problems at the well-run shelters or and and this really isn't a shelter, this is helping to establish a uh a credit history. This is really an apartment building.
And uh so uh in your opinion, uh does this application meet each of the criteria necessary for the board to grant uh a special use in this case?
Yes, it does.
And you uh submitted a uh report, and if you were to continue to testify, testify consistently with it, is that right?
That's correct.
May I just ask uh Mr. Mallory, just a couple of wind-up questions that I forgot? Um so uh our exhibit number four is a contract. Um you have a contract to purchase this property, is that right?
I do, yes.
Uh Grow Community does.
Grow Community does, yes.
And and um actually, it was supposed to close in March. And I had a little um colloquy discussion with Mr. Murphy about whether or not, since it was really an apartment building, it needed a special use. I lost that argument. Uh so uh we filed in April, um and then uh in May, there were no new cases. Uh you had to give up your earnest money to extend it and uh but if the board grants this, you hope to close next week, is that right?
That's correct, yes.
The way you're going to do that, the next number five, that was number four, I'm sorry, number five is a letter from the Illinois Department of Housing Authority. And they are have uh said they would give you a grant to fund this program, is that right?
That's correct, yes.
And um then the the building is ready to move into. It does not need a lot of work, but we have plans just as built, is that right? That's number uh six, is that right?
That's correct.
And um uh number seven is just shows that the planning department uh the 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 people who stay here will not have cars, is that right?
That's correct.
But there is a bus stop literally in front, is that right?
That's correct.
And um there are two parking spaces so the counselors or um uh could, uh there is some parking in the back, is that right?
That's correct.
And number eight is is your resume and and your various certificates, certificates and degrees, is that right?
That's correct.
Uh Mr. Chairman, that is our case in chief. I would like to you to recognize there are a number of people in support of this. Uh I don't know, maybe you could ask them to stand or something, just to, just so you know.
Yeah, what 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 all the uh people here in support please stand at this moment? For my own counting, well, actually I can see Janine is counting. Let the record reflect that there are thirty-five uh members of the public uh here in support of this matter. Any questions um for the applicant before we turn to the uh objectors?
I just, I just, this is Commissioner Brooks, and I do just have one, and I think you kind of cleared it up, Mr. Ryan, but I just want to clarify. Because you used shelter, but you did kind of course correct, this would be transit, this won't be transitional housing, these will be apartment units. And then I guess for you, Mr. Mallory, do you have a timeframe for which residents will be living in the units?
The hope is by uh late summer, so August at the soonest, um September. I'm just getting everything, you know, painting, touch-ups, things, that's a little stuff, you know, nothing serious.
And then when they move in, is there a term in which they're there ninety days a year? That or do you, have you worked that piece out yet?
Yeah, so the goal is four to five months.
Okay.
And again, that whole goal is to build that history of paying rent.
I'll have additional questions, I'm sure, but that's all I wanted for now.
All right, at this time, let's um let's turn over uh to the objectors. Uh please proceed.
Hello, everybody. My name is Karina Kwaku. I'm here representing Alderman David Moore. I'm his chief of staff. Um speaking to you today because the alderman is in opposition of this particular initiative. Um and just to, for the record, we are not not supporting this initiative because of the people that it would bring to the community or the type of work that they do. I think that that was kind of misleading. What the problem is, is we believe that the location in which they want to bring the the program is in an area that we consider to be a hotspot, where there's ongoing violence and crime. And we don't know that we believe that it is conducive to their success for you to put returning citizens in an environment like that. Because we believe that it could potentially be something that could pretty much make them backtrack in a sense. So right now I am speaking in opposition on behalf of Alderman David Moore. Um we've also held a community meeting and we worked with Aaron Mallory, the applicant. Um and we also even suggested potentially coming back to the drawing board and finding other places within the ward that aren't hotspots that we could potentially put his um program that could, that that we thought would better work, but um apparently maybe that wasn't good enough, so. Um and also the seventy-eight-hundred block of Bishop, of which, there's a block club of which would be directly impacted, and they're here with me today. Um they got about roughly eighty signatures of residents in the community that are directly impacted that feel that there have been some ongoing issues that need to be dealt with before we decide to put an initiative like this in. Um so, so yeah, so that's pretty much my major points or things that I want to say. I'm going to let the witnesses speak. The residents of the
Sure, if you could um start by saying your name and address?
Okay, hi, uh my name is Cindy Williams. I am one of the presidents of the Seventy-Eighth Bishop Block Club. Um my address is seventy-eight twenty-two Bishop. Um a- again, I I'm, you know, I'm I'm listening to Grow speak and some of the things that they're saying or the attorney is saying, who was not at, the attorney was not at the community meeting. We we, you know, we all about a second chance. I think everyone spoke. We have a lot of senior citizens in our area. And one of the things that we stress is Seventy-Ninth Street is a hotspot, is shootings over there every other day. We have a problem now with the building adjacent to the building that he's, I'm assuming, I don't know if he purchased or not, but even in building right next door to where he's trying to put his facility, that's a problem for us. There is no additional parking in the back of the building that they're speaking of. There are empty lots on the side, the few parking lots in the back is occupied by the building right next to it. And in the community meeting that we had with Alderman David Moore and we invited Grow to come in because David Moore was not aware of this was coming into our neighborhood until we received a letter and everyone in the community and on our block or Seventy-Ninth and Laughlin or Eightieth and Laughlin or Eightieth and Bishop, within those radius, no one received letters, maybe five, to even let us know that this is happening. Even today, for this appeal, maybe two people off of our block received a letter. So in the meeting, we presented, and I have a a couple of extra copies where this is a petition with about eighty signatures that's that is against it. In the community meeting, we had about fifty or sixty people to show up and we voted that we was against it. And Mr. Moore advised him that he could not bring this into his community and he is willing to help him relocate it. Some of the young men and and you know, they they was upset and they stormed out of the meeting. So our concern is our safety. It's nothing about what he's trying to build. But every day is a hustle and bustle for us to try to come home where we work. You have former county city employees on the neighborhood. I, you know, majority of it is seniors, right? And if you know anything about Gresham or Seventy-Ninth and Ashland, that is truly a hotspot. We just had a big, major shooting over there. But what we had a problem is, how is that going to help the young men when you're bringing them back into the same environment? Two, there's no security, correct? They 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 don't have any security for this program. We also went and drove to his other facility where there was guys hanging out, throwing up gang signs. And we even brought that to the meeting with video, which we showed uh the the young man about. So we was like, no, we don't want this type of environment and we just, we don't need any additional environment like that.
Thank you. Sir, uh did you intend to speak as well? Could you state your name and address, please?
Name is Herman Williams, seventy-eight, seventy-eight twenty-two South Bishop. I know one of the reason that she's speaking on is across the street is a daycare. We don't know the backgrounds of these guys. I do believe in a second chance, but right now, this is not the right time to put a program in the neighborhood that we have constant problems in. A week ago, we could have, an elderly lady was killed on Seventy-Ninth and Ashland. Cause this was in the uh crossfires, was shot and killed, elderly lady on her way to a funeral. So we trying to make the the neighborhood better for us putting people who came from the envi- environment back into the same type of environment. There's no guarantee that it's going to be a hundred percent that they're going to go the straight and narrow. They might get laid astray. We don't know that. We don't know the backgrounds. So it was all about the safety for the neighbors. There's a lot of elderly retired folks that stays in that area. And also the notification that 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 did not go out. Only a few people got the notification saying that they had want to start this program in the neighborhood. So these are the things, the violence that take place in there. If it was in a different community, that was safe, yes. But right now, it's not the time to have a community like that in this area based on the problem that we already have. Thank you.
Thank you. Um ma'am, uh could you state your name and address, please?
My name is Aunt routine Chisholm. I live at seventy-eight oh six South Bishop. And I am a resident of Auburn, Russian and have been there for forty-five years. And the neighborhood has changed immensely. We have a lot of shootings every day. You're out, I'm outside gardening and I'm hearing gunshots. I'm, my husband and I are mooring our lawn and here's some idiot coming down the street with a gun, hanging out a window of the car. And I mean, like, who does that? And the area, the building that they're suggesting that they take over across the street, directly across the street from that building, not only is it a daycare, but it's also a drug house. Around the corner, there's another drug house directly behind the building that they're trying to obtain. I don't see where these guys would benefit from being in that environment in this neighborhood.
Thank you. Um do do any of the uh objectors have any questions for the applicant?
I actually do. You said that there's a remediation program before they move into the Grow Community House, correct? Um how long is that remediation program for?
Currently is three months and we're also expanding it to four months um to provide more time and support um to be able to assist our guys.
Okay, so as it currently stands, it's three months remediation before they move into their home. Okay.
Yeah.
One of the, one of, one of the questions for me um was the three month. And in our community meeting, we, one of the concerns we had, what happens after the three months? Or what happens if that individual don't apply by their rules? And what was said in our meeting is that they would just put them out. And we go, wait a minute, well, why, we put them out and do what? You're just gonna put them out and put them on the streets? You know, I mean, that's not a good thing for us to have. And two, when you're looking at the pamphlet and the licensed clinical social worker and things of that nature, I'm looking at a expired license. So where are all of these masters, bachelors? You know, where is all these certificates are coming from? In this exhibit, this is expired.
Which exhibit are you referring to?
In this packet that was given to us.
Which number?
Uh eight, I think, but it's in a bag. The State of Illinois Department of Financial Professional Regulations is Licensed Clinical Social Worker. It expires eleven thirty twenty twenty-one. It's Masters Licensed Clinical Social Worker expires eleven thirty twenty twenty-one.
If if I could just ask a question for um your, Mr. Mallory, correct?
Correct.
Do you have a current uh uh license with the Illinois Department? license with the Illinois Department of Financial Professional Regulation as a clinical social worker?
Yes, I do.
And it's active?
It is active. It's open to the public. And if you go to the website, put my name and information, you will see that it is updated and active.
And just by way of explanation, these are exhibits from the, the next case, which we passed before this board in twenty twenty one. And I'm sorry, I didn't get your updated certificates, et cetera, but you are current on all of them. Is that right?
That's correct. And it's open to the public. If you go to the Illinois Regulatory Board's website, you can put my name, Aaron Mallory, in and you will see that my license is active at this current moment.
Yeah, I think it's idfpr.com.
There you go, yes.
Any other questions that the objectors have for the applicant? Okay, thank you. Questions from the board?
Yes, I'm back. Commissioner Brooks again. And as someone who works in permanent supportive housing and with all these academics over here, I just, I know in the work that I do that these types of developments do actually tend to statistically bring down crime in those areas. So I'm sure you guys have done a lot of research around that. So I just wanted to invite you to kind of talk through that because I obviously didn't come with that, but I'm guessing you know that off the top of your head.
Yeah, well, like I said earlier too, like when we think about the level of homelessness or instability for guys when they come back into the community, if there aren't any supports for them, then I think kind of what we heard earlier is that we have these shootings, we have these, these challenges taking place. And so for us, we're trying to solve this problem. Something has to be done to curtail the gun violence within our community. But we recognize too that if there aren't any resources or support for men as they come back into these communities, what do we expect to happen? And so our goal is by providing a very robust but challenging workforce program. And then also saying, hey, we'll help you with housing, provide you with that history. It's motivation for somebody to have hope now because now they say, hey, if I work hard, there are steps and it could keep me focused. Again, we also talked about too that peer influence has a huge impact. And if you're around other people who aren't motivated, who don't have any aspirations, it's easy to fall back into the traps that the community presents itself currently with. And we're saying, hey, we want to come in and give guys hope and then put them around like-minded individuals that will push them as well.
But, but also, didn't you tell me that the, you thought this group of men at this location could be a positive addition to the neighborhood? How is that?
Yeah, well, I would say a couple of ways. First is that individuals that are not motivated, but also individuals who have connections into the community. And now there's people in the community who may be engaged in street behavior, seeing somebody that looks like them, that comes from them, is now somebody doing something positive, can create hope and inspiration to say, hey, he did it. He's from this area. You know what? I can do it too now. Oftentimes, people don't see people that look like them that come from these communities that are doing something positive. And now these men can be advocates and also be a positive light to these guys that are already in the community that's taking place.
And you also talk about that they could volunteer to shovel an elderly person's walk and things like that.
Cutting grass, find a way just to get back to the community, you know?
And you would, your program would encourage them to become community members?
Yes, as an organization, we're community driven. And so our goal would be to definitely be a light and also to be able to show the community that we're an asset to the community.
Awesome. Well, just thank you for your work. As some, as a Southside, I'm certainly sensitive to the residents, but also as someone who works in this space. I mean, seventy seven percent of the homeless population is, in Chicago is black. And probably fifteen to twenty percent of that are justice involved. So these types of projects are really important. So thank you for the work and thank you for your, you gentlemen, for sharing your stories. I know that's challenging to do in these public settings, so I certainly want to acknowledge that it's great that you're willing to do so. I don't know that I would be able to. So thank you for sharing your stories today.
This is Commissioner Esposito. I have a quick question for Mr. Moore, I guess, or Mr. Mallory, I'm sorry. The objectors have expressed concern about specifically, really, their concerns seem to revolve around the site and this particular address per se. So could you describe why you're focused on this address? And if you have concerns or why you might not have concerns?
Yes, so I would say the location speaks to the need that's in the area. Two, the property is a very unique property built in two thousand and ten. Four bedrooms, two bathrooms, but then also has a laundry unit. And so it would be very, it would create a very nice space for these guys to reside in, to be able to have everything they need right there. I think also too, like I said, these aren't just anybody. These are individuals who went through a very rigorous program and have to hit certain benchmarks. And so it's not like we're just taking anybody off the street. These are individuals who showed a high level and a determination to be in the program. They come to work on time every day. They complete their task, complete the homework assignments that we give them as well. And I would say lastly too is that we'll also have support. We'll have staff at the site to be able to support guys in the space as well. And so like I said, it's not a level of we're just bringing anybody and say, hey, you can live here. You have to meet our benchmarks. Another part too was we do have a zero tolerance. So if somebody's not abiding by our rules, we will put them out. And the only reason why I say that is that because if we allow any type of chaos, then that's what creates more, right? But also too, recognizing that we have resources, we have relationship with community stakeholders that we can connect them to as well. So it's not just a, hey, you're out and you're on your own, but we connect them to other resources so we can still assist and support. They still will be able to get the quality, the counseling. It's just that the aspect of housing would be forfeited if they don't abide by the rules that we have.
Okay, so then in other words, you're attracted to the physical layout and attributes of this property. They serve the needs of your constituency.
Yes.
And your population. Do you have concerns about the safety of the immediate neighborhood?
I don't because number one, a lot of the guys are coming from this community. I would say two is that again, the space that we're creating, these guys will be working. They will be contributing. So it's not like guys laying around all day or guys that'd be just sitting outside. They will be very focused and working so there won't be any idle time. And being productive and being busy will also minimize a lot of things that transpire as well.
Thank you.
I have a, a question for the objectors. I think when, ma'am, when you were speaking, you mentioned something about you had a video of another Grohl location where people were loitering out front. Can you tell us more about that?
In the community meeting, we had another resident and I believe she was off of seventy, seventy eighth in Laughlin. And during the meeting, she presented a video in which she showed Mr. Mallory, the things that was happening outside of that resident, broken, you know, congregating. The windows were busted out. Mr. Mallory tried to claim that, you know, because of the, the, the one man out with the, I think he, the corn or something, but that's not what she saw. You know what I mean? Yes, the man was out with a corn, but she also saw them hanging out T-shirts of, you know, throwing up gang signs and things of that nature. And one of our concern in our community was, okay, once they go through their programming and schooling and things of that nature during the day, what happens at night? Right? I still don't hear, and I still don't hear today, what security is being provided.
Maybe you can address the security issue. And if you could also speak to this situation at, at the other place and kind of tell me more about that.
For sure. So for security, we have security at our Hundred Fifteenth Street location. And so we also have a staff, individuals who can de-escalate, who understand how to support our guys in this situation. However, like I said earlier, these are guys who have met benchmarks, who have demonstrated a high level. And again, they're renting a space from us, right? And so we want to give them some autonomy, but also having staff there that can support them. I wish the pictures were brought in regards to what the opposition is saying so that we can use that. And I could really talk you through what that picture depicted. Now, there is a man that sells corn really next to our, next to our building. It's a very popular staple in the area. He's been there for a very long time.
What is corn?
So the corn is, it's like Mexican corn. It's like got the mayonnaise and the pepper and everything. So he's a very.
It's delicious.
It's really good. It's really good. He's very popular in our area. If you ever drive down Hundred Fifteenth Street between like, what's that, Keen driving force? You see him, he has always a long line. And literally like if, I wish the pictures were brought in so that we could, like you all could see that these guys were lined up getting corn. And then there was one picture of a young man that was walking. He had his hands up. And they said that was a gang sign. But like, there was no congregating of people just outside. Now, there was a broken window and I can attest that we had a challenge at the site before. That person was removed from the site because we have a zero tolerance. And we also recognize too, like there are going to be some barriers and challenges, but we have a zero tolerance policy. So we addressed that situation, got that young person out that transpired with it as well. So I, I have to be honest, like we're going to do everything in our power to mitigate things and to, to resolve things as expeditious as possible. But recognizing that as we're building this out, we had to be, you know, just recognize the things that's taking place. But again, I wish those pictures were here.
You talked about having someone at, on the site to de-escalate. Are there certain hours that that person, are we talking about one person? And are there certain hours that that person will be there?
Yep, so there will be shifts. And so there will be people in the nighttime as well as throughout the day to be able to provide those de-escalation services if needed, but also more just to be able to be a support system. Hey, you going through, you need to talk to somebody, you can come down and talk to them as well. Not required for them to do, but again, would be there on site to support them. And that's in the evening, night and in the morning times as well.
Is that, I mean, is that a twenty-four hour or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, any other, any other questions from the board?
So could we do a brief couple of rebuttal questions? So you want to address some of the things, the, the fears and, and problems that were raised by the objectors?
Well, I think I really want to address that, you know, I think we had some proactive conversations coming into the community with the alderman.
Well, let me ask you about that. So I had met the alderman here in this room at a zoning committee meeting before we sent out any letters and asked him, could I bring you to meet him? Is that right?
That's correct.
And you and I went and met him, is that right?
That's correct.
And he was very impressed with you, is that right?
That's correct.
He told you so.
That's correct.
And he told you that he'd like to be for this program, that he, he saw a need for it, is that right?
That's correct.
In his community.
That's correct.
But he, he wanted to have a community meeting to see how the community felt before he could tell us whether he would support it or not.
That's correct.
And at the community meeting, there were a lot of people who were against it.
That's correct.
And, and then, so apparently since then, he's been against it.
That's correct.
And you tried to call him several times and you haven't been able to talk to him?
Yes, I tried calling Cordero, one of the staff there numerous times. Told that the alderman would give me a call back or we have a conversation, I haven't got any call back.
I think that's the essence of it. I, I would make a statement if, if you're open to that.
Briefly.
Sure. I, the new mayor has talked about lighting the light instead of cursing the darkness. You know, statistically, this is needed. The planning department says it's needed. The Illinois Department of Housing says it's needed and the alderman told us it was needed. So that's one of the elements of this. Is there a need? Is it, does it, does it support the the community? Is it, is it something that the community needs? And there's can be no doubt of that. You've heard the, the passion and the, the competence and the mission of the people who are going to run this. And I, I'd ask you to choose the light instead of the darkness, but to choose hope instead of fear and to give a chance for success instead of failure and to, to be leaders here. It's hard. You'd like to please everybody all the time, but sometimes you got to take a larger view. And that, that is your role and I'd ask you to do that in this case.
I, I did see that the alderman wanted, wanted to speak or the alderman's office wanted to speak one last time.
Sure. I want to say that I don't know that that's the most forthcoming. I can say that I was actually there in that conversation. If you remember, I was there. And that wasn't the preference of the conversation. What the conversation was is that we like the idea. We think that what you're doing is great. We want to see things like that. But we need to bring it to the community first. At the end of the day, Alderman Moore, his seat belongs to the seventeen ward residents. The seventeen ward residents have spoken. That's what it was. It was no, it was nothing else other than that. Like we said, we would love to work with you to collaborate to find another location that would better, that we see that that program can better be, I don't know, applied or find its success, but we just don't know that it's right there on Seventy Ninth Street. And like I said, the residents have spoken, they circulated petitions, we had community meetings. They weren't for it. Therefore, the alderman who serves the seventeen ward residents is not for it. That's the conversation.
Okay, thank you, everyone. I appreciate everybody's input on this one. We are going to take it under advisement. All right, while everyone is getting situated, I will read the department's recommendation. This is the recommendation for calendar number one ninety seven dash twenty-three dash S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a transitional residence within an existing one-story residential and rear two-story coach house buildings provided. One, the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Grow Community NFP. Two, the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated September thirteen twenty twenty one, prepared by Gary L. Matthews, Licensed Architect. Three, the facility is utilized as transitional housing and treatment exclusively for adult males recuperating from drug and alcohol addiction. Four, there are no more than eight adult male residents at any time. And five, the final linkage agreement with the Department of Corrections is provided prior to the issuance of any building permits. With that, Counselor Moore, you may proceed.
Thank you. And I, it appears we have no objectors on this case.
You do have no objectors and you can do the short form.
I, just a little bit of history though, if we may.
So, brief history.
My name is Thomas S. Moore for the record. And what is your name?
My name is Aaron Mallory.
And Aaron, you and I appeared on this case in exhibit number three is September seventeenth, twenty twenty one, before this board. And this is a traditional transitional residence, is that right?
Yes, it is.
It's an in-house residence for formerly incarcerated people that they would come straight out of prison to this residence. They get counseling and they get job training. And this is something that would happen before they'd be eligible for the case we just did a minute ago. Is that right?
That's correct.
And we got it approved by this board, but in the process, Nancy and the planning department basically gave us a whole bunch of changes to the building so that there would be sufficient seventy-five square feet per person in the bedrooms, et cetera. So it was, there was a lot of reserve, a lot of renovation necessary. Is that right?
Substantial amount of renovations required after.
And you were having trouble financing that, is that right?
That's correct.
And so as you struggled with financing it, the year passed by and, and unfortunately, I didn't communicate with you. You didn't tell me that the year, that you weren't able to do it in the year. And I was surprised when then you called me and said you, you had applied to do the work and they said you can't, you need a special use.
That's correct.
So we had to start over.
That's correct.
And we're here now. And now we're here and we're ready to have him attest to his affidavit.
And so you, sir, you, sir, and I worked out a, a affidavit where you addressed all the criteria necessary for this board to grant this special use, just like they did two years ago. Is that right?
That's correct.
And if you continue to testify, testify consistently with it, is that right?
Yes, can I say one thing? Go ahead. And now we have the funding from Illinois Housing Development Authority, so we were able to get two grants. And so that grant will now give us the ability to be able to rehab the property according to the city standards that they wanted originally.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Ryan, at my request, you did a.
I actually have a question on that. Is that financing contingent on both of these being approved?
Oh, you know, like each one is separate in regards to how they set up.
Okay, thank you.
And as a matter of fact, the, there was a letter specifically on the other one and our other set of, of documents, right? And our exhibit number, number seven is the letter from the department on this one, is that right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Ryan, at my request, you did a study on whether or not this would have a negative effect on the surrounding property values. You made that same study two years ago and has your conclusion changed?
No.
And in your opinion, will it?
No.
And does this application meet all the criteria necessary for the board to grant this request for a transitional house at this location?
Stated in my report, yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, you testify consistently with your report, is that right?
Yes, I would.
That is our case, short form.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Just a quick question, Commissioner Brooks, again. The alderman letter is from Carrie Austin, but this is in Beal's ward.
Well, that's right, it just changed. And had, had we, we thought, we filed in January, we thought we would have been on April. Whatever reason, we didn't make it. So, but I did send everything to Alderman Beal and I did talk to him and he's not here. He said he was going to investigate.
Okay. So I have a feeling he would be here or something, so just wanted to check, I was.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
I do.
Thank you, we will take this under advisement.
Thanks for your patience.
All right, I'll go ahead and read the department's recommendation. This is the recommendation for calendar number 58-23-S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a day labor employment agency at first floor unit one, provided, one, the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Elite Labor Services LTD. Two, the development is consistent with the design and layout of the site plan survey dated April 23, 2021, prepared by Exacta Land Surveyors LLC and Title Sheet, May 9, 2022. CTA line drawing dated April 29, 2022, and floor plans dated August 23, 2022, prepared by JP Architects. Three, prior to issuance of a business license and/or certificate of occupancy, a 48-foot loading zone will be established along the front of the property on Cirmac Road to accommodate the loading and unloading of the day labor employees each workday. Four, the applicant will only load/unload one of their transport vehicles at a time within the designated loading zone. And five, the applicant's three transport vehicles will be parked/stored at their corporate offices at 1315 North North Branch when not in use. Counselor Barbarian, you have no objectors and you can proceed with the short form.
Excellent. Okay, my name is Talar Barbarian with Thompson Coburn LLP, offices at 55 East Monroe in Chicago. I am here representing Elites Labor Services LTD in this request for a special use as well as a variation to reduce parking. That is our second application from the Department of Planning and Development's recommendation of five parking spaces to zero. I am here today with Mike Ray, who is the authorized representative of the company. He is also the Vice President of Operations for Elite Labor Services. And I am also here with Michael Hobbs, who is an MAI appraiser, who runs his own company that performs those kinds of services. And he has testified before this board. I would ask that the board recognizes his expertise.
The board recognizes his expertise.
Excellent. So we are here, as I said, seeking the special use for the 1,296 square foot commercial space to be used as a day labor employment agency. As a threshold matter, we would like to acknowledge the department's work with us. We have been at this for several months now. However, we cannot agree to the third condition, the department's third condition, which is to establish a loading space at the site prior to seeking a license for our operation. Although we have a letter of recommendation from the alderman's office indicating that they would support establishment of a loading space in front of this retail location. The process for establishing a loading space can be unpredictably long. It entails not only introduction and passage of an ordinance with the alderman's office, which they have indicated that they would do. But in addition, it requires inspection and approval by the Chicago Department of Transportation. We do not expect that there will be any trouble in obtaining that support. However, the length of time it takes for CDOT to come out and inspect these spaces is just, it's unpredictable. And as a business enterprise, we cannot wait the amount of time that it will take for CDOT to come out and inspect. So for those reasons, we cannot abide by that condition. However, if the condition is changed by the board such that we agree to seek the loading space, we work diligently with the alderman's office to seek the loading space, we would be happy to comply with that condition. Sure. Absolutely, yes, we have been in contact with, and we understand the city's position. If this is simply a business decision that my client is making this afternoon. And we'll present a little bit of testimony today about the availability of parking on Cirmac, the fact that the loading space, you know, will be established in an area on Cirmac. It's a wide street and it won't block traffic.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm looking at a, an email from Nancy Radzovich from the Department of Planning and Development, Counselor Barbarian. And I'm just going to read it into the record. She said, Talar, we are holding to our recommended conditions. Unlike Ubers, these are oversized vehicles, loading/unloading multiple people at each time. And there's no guarantee without the designated loading zone that the parking will be available to accommodate their vehicles. That's what she said. All right, go, go ahead.
Okay, excellent. So Mike, can you please just state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, Mike Ray, 11248 South Avenue N, Netson, Chicago.
And we submitted a collection of submissions to the zoning board, including an affidavit on your behalf, which you helped us to prepare. If you were to continue testifying this afternoon, would your testimony be consistent with the information submitted in that affidavit?
It would, yes.
And then I'll move on to Mr. Hobbs. Mr. Hobbs, same with you. You prepared a report that we submitted together with the materials we provided to the board. If you were to continue testifying this afternoon, would your testimony be consistent with the information provided in that report?
Yes, Michael Hobbs with Paru Appraisal and Consultancy. Our address, Paru, P-A-H-R-O-O, appraisal and consultancy. Oh, I'm sorry, I've leaned in further. My name is Michael Hobbs. Our firm is Paru Appraisal and Consultancy. And the answer is yes, Counselor Talar.
Thank you. And I guess I'll just ask a couple more questions of my witnesses, if that's okay. Mike, can you speak a little bit to currently Elite Labor Services, Elite Staffing has a location that is in Berwyn, Illinois, is that correct?
Yes, that is true.
And it's a few miles down the road.
Correct.
And if this request were approved this afternoon, that location would be relocated? So the operation will be relocated to the city?
Yes.
And you have done extensive sort of vetting of this location? And you have deemed that it is appropriate for the operation of the business at that site?
Yes, that's correct.
And in your multiple visits to the site, have you ever noticed an absence or a dearth of parking or any kind of trash, traffic congestion on the stretch of Cirmac Avenue?
None, no.
And in your opinion, as somebody who is very familiar with the operations of the business, do you think that the company would be able to conduct its operations safely? Taking care that traffic would not be blocked and that folks would be able to be loaded and unloaded safely into the transportation vehicles? In the meantime, while we work to, work with the alderman's office to establish the loading space in front of the location?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. And I will ask Mr. Hobbs the same questions. You visited the site as part of your investigation?
Yes, I did.
And in your visits to the site, did you notice any congestion of Cirmac that would obstruct Elites' ability to safely load transportation vehicles on the street?
No, I did not. And furthermore, when you looked through that block, it's a low, lower density and there are vacant parcels through there. So it's even less than the neighboring blocks to the east or to the west.
Mike, I'm sorry, Mike Ray, back to Mike. One other question, the other retail spaces in this building are unoccupied at this time, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. And although that's a temporary condition, we will continue to work with the alderman's office to establish the loading space. So, you know, we anticipate that during the time that that it takes to establish that loading space, there won't be any other commercial users in that building.
Correct.
Thank you. If there are no other questions, oh, one, one other point I'd like to make, I'm sorry, I'll ask Michael this question. So this is a day labor employment agency. The parking requirement for a day labor employment agency is at the discretion of the Department of Planning and Development. We submitted a parking determination request to the Department of Planning and Development, and their recommendation was five parking spaces in order primarily to accommodate the vehicles that are used by Elite to transport day labor employees to their places of employment. However, ordinarily, a commercial enterprise, a commercial use on a C1-2 zone street would not require parking.
No, it would not.
And patrons and employees alike would be, you know, free to park in the street.
They would be subject to visiting that location and therefore whatever parking is available is what they would be, can, you know, benefited by or constrained by.
The last point I'd like to make is, and I guess this is a question for Mike. This is a transit served location, is that correct?
Yes.
And you expect that most of the people who, a vast majority of the people who visit the site will arrive by public transportation?
Yes, that's correct.
And the site is transit served not only by the CTA station that is nearby, I believe less than 1,000 feet away, but also Cirmac Avenue is a designated transit served bus corridor, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. We're happy to take additional questions from the board.
Any questions from the board? We have what we need, we'll take it under advisement.
Thank you very much.
Next four cases, 199-23-S, 223-Z, 201-23-S, 202-3-Z, 6620 South Martin Luther King Drive, and 6601 through 27 South Martin Luther King Drive.
I'm going to go ahead and read the recommendations. This is the recommendation for calendar number 199-22-S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish off-site required parking for the proposed community center and trade school in the proposed three and four-story multi-use building at 6601 to 27 South Martin Luther King Junior Drive. Provided the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Project Hood Communities Development Corporation and the parking space layout and locations are consistent with the design and layout of the architectural site plan slash parking layout and landscape plan and details dated June 15, 2023, prepared by BNMO Architecture slash Interior Design. This is the recommendation for calendar number 201-23-S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a community center and trade school in the proposed three and four-story multi-use building with 22 required off-site parking spaces located at 6620 South Martin Luther King Junior Drive, provided the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Project Hood Communities Development Corporation. And the development is consistent with the design and layout of the architectural site plan slash parking layout and landscape plan and details dated June 15, 2023, architectural elevations dated June 5, 2023, architectural overall floor plans dated March 17, 2023, first floor plan, second floor plan, mezzanine plan, third floor plan, and upper roof plan, January 31, 2023, all prepared by BNMO Architecture slash Interior Design. You may proceed with the short form, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Rolando Acosta here on behalf of the applicant. I have three witnesses here with me today. Mr. Chairman, Pastor Corey Brooks, who is the principal with the applicant, Project Hood. He's also the pastor of New Beginnings Church of Chicago, which is the owner and operator of the 6620 site. Jean Moyer, who is the architect for this project, and Peter Pulos, who is our MAI appraiser. Mr. Chairman, I would ask two things. One, if you could recognize Mr. Pulos as an expert?
So recognized.
And second, if you'd like to swear in our witnesses?
Yes. Would everyone raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you.
I'll try to make this very simple and short. Project Hood wishes to build a community center on the parcel that is on the east side of Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Drive and wishes for that, we need a special use. We're also seeking a variation to relieve the project from having to build a 10 by 50 loading berth within the project. We simply don't expect that size vehicles. Even if we had that size vehicles, they would never be able to access it from the alley. We have put into the project a 10 by 25, which would accommodate the typical vehicles that would come to the site. The other two cases relate to the parking lot. The parking is to be located at the 6620 site. That is the church's parking, but the church only uses the parking on Sundays between nine and one. And the community center doesn't operate at that hour, at those hours. There's 121 parking spaces available there, so more than plenty to accommodate the 22. And the variation is to have the shared use of the 22 parking spaces between the community center and the church. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to first turn to Pastor Corey Brooks. Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Corey Brooks, 6620 South King Drive. I'm the pastor of New Beginnings Church of Chicago and the founder of Project Hood as well. And in 2011, there was a young man by the name of Carlton Archer who was shot and killed. And we decided we wanted to do something different in our neighborhood after that death. I went up on top of a roof of a motel that was central to a lot of gangs using it, a lot of sex trafficking, a lot of prostitution, and decided that I wasn't going to come down until we had enough money to purchase it. I stayed there, I thought it was going to be like a week, but I ended up staying there for 94 days. We finally raised the money to purchase that motel and tear it down. While I was on that, on that roof, we started Project Hood. We started looking at all the issues that our community was faced with and what we needed to do to solve the issues. And we came up with five primary areas that we wanted to work with. Education, economic, social ills, spiritual ills, and health and wellness. And so we started our journey to build a community center. And after 10 years, we realized we didn't have enough money. And we had a lot of programs that we were doing and we were serving a lot of people in the community. And I went on the roof again because of my commitment to make this effort happen. And I ended up staying there for this time, 340 days, to raise enough money to build the center that we're, that's now on your screen, that will house all of our programs that are focused on transformation of the neighborhood, focused on empowering every person in our neighborhood, specifically. focused on empowering every person in our neighborhood, specifically working with gangs. We now have, we've gone from three employees to now over a hundred employees. We have thirty-five full-time employees, forty part-time employees. Those forty part-time employees are from the FLIP program, which is part of the city's initiative to solve the issues of violence. And this building will be able to have over two hundred people who are working, most of those from the community of Woodline. That's our effort to contribute to the city as we fight against violence and poverty in our neighborhood, one block at a time.
Thank you for that. And you did prepare an affidavit, is that correct? Or you signed an affidavit in this matter?
Yes, you prepared affidavit, I prepared affidavits, you reviewed the affidavits, all one per application. You've signed those, and if you were to continue to testify, your testimony would be consistent with those affidavits.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Najin, can you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Najin Moyer. I am the owner of BNMO Design. And my address is thirty twenty-eight North Hoyne, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six one eight.
And you are the architect for this project?
Yes.
And similarly, I prepared an affidavit per matter for you. You reviewed those affidavits. You executed them, and if you were to continue to testify, your testimony would be consistent with those affidavits, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. And turning over to Mr. Pulos. Please state your name and address for the record.
Peter Pulos, offices at two thirty, West Monroe, Suite twenty-one twenty-five, Chicago, Illinois.
And you reviewed the site?
Yes.
Reviewed the proposal?
Yes.
Prepared a report addressing whether the proposals met all the standards for approval of special uses for the two special uses requested, is that correct?
That's correct.
And you found that it met all the standards?
That's correct.
Have no detrimental impact on the neighborhood or adjacent nearby properties?
That's correct.
And if you were to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with your report?
Yes, it would.
With that, Mr. Chairman, we would stand for any questions the board may have.
Any questions from the board?
Commissioner Brooks, no relation, by the way, just for the record. That I know of. But with that said, beautiful building. As a Washington Park neighbor on King Drive, this is pretty adjacent to where I live. So this is a beautiful building. Just kind of curious, in the timeframe, that's just me being nosy as opposed to.
Our goal is to start August first, and we've been told it'll take us eighteen to twenty months of construction time.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, we will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I move that we convene into closed session pursuant to section two C four of the Open Meetings Act for the purpose of considering the evidence and testimony presented in open session. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, we're in closed session. Okay, I move that we return to open session. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, we're back. We will now vote. Note that any motion to approve a special use will be tied to the recommendations of the department and any additional conditions read by me. I move to approve all continuance requests to the dates stated by me. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the continuance requests are I vote yes, the continuance requests are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 192-23-S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 193-23-S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 194-23-S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 196-23-S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 197-23-S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers 198-23-Z and 58-23-S with the conditions of the Department of Planning and Development as stated in the department's letter. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers 199-23-S, 200-23-Z, 201-23-S, and 202-23-Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve the written resolutions containing findings of fact consistent with the votes of the board for board calendar numbers 49-23-Z, 50-23-Z, and 133-23-S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes. The resolutions are approved. I move to approve the written resolutions containing findings of fact consistent with the votes of the board at its May 19, 2023 regular meeting. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the resolutions are approved. I move that we adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.